Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is our host, Sandeep Vednikar. And you're watching One Universe, the show that promotes positivity to the promotion of love, peace and harmony. And talking about promoting positivity, we have my good friend, Commander James Kirkwood. He has been on the show a couple of times and now we have a video interview this time. But we are going to be talking about something more than him being with the Memphis Police Department. He's also involved in quite a few things, but let us start by asking him to introduce himself.
Hi, I'm James Kirkwood. Thank you, Sandeep, for inviting me to be on your show again. Well, I'm just this guy who was a servant to the community of Memphis. And I've done that in different roles, Colonel with the Police Department, Pastor with my own church, Ambassadors for Christ, and Executive Director for the Memphis Christian Pastors Network. And just a, hey, just a man who works to make things better.
Okay, are you forgetting one thing?
Oh, yeah. Chairman of the Civilian Law Enforcement Review Board, yes. They were both of us serve on the board, yes.
Right, so, and tell us about your family.
I'm blessed to be married to Beverly. She is a transplant from L.A. to this city. Her parents grew up in this city and she was a military brat and they was born out in L.A. But she came to Memphis. We have four daughters between us, four daughters who are grown and I have fourteen grandchildren.
Whoa, alright.
Yes, I have fourteen grandchildren whom I love. There's no better word. I thought daddy was an awesome word to hear, you know. But when you hear granddaddy, granddaddy, oh man, it's just, ooh, you just turn into mush.
Yeah, so the, the business, the private business owners from India have a saying that when you give out money, the capital you get it return is, is, is really good. But the interest that you get on the capital is even better. So having children is good, but having grandchildren is much, much better.
Yes, yes.
So I understand that, although I don't have any grandkids yet. But we are here to talk about your run for office, so tell us about it.
I am running for City Council District Three. And District Three is made up of the Whitehaven area, Whitehaven, Oak Haven, Fox Meadows, part of Parkway Village, and a large part of Hickory Hill.
So we are talking about the lower badge of Memphis.
Of Memphis, yeah. That Winchester-Homes World corridor. You just go take it from east side of Everest Presley on back to Riverdale and you will encompass District Three.
So, and what is the population in the area?
The population of the District Three is about a hundred thousand.
Okay.
Hundred thousand citizens. It has forty thousand registered voters that is within that district. It is a, it is a very, very important district during election times because District Three can shift. Who will become mayor, who will become congressman in our area. It is a huge district to pay attention to.
So we were recently at a half mile walk in Westford and we have you on camera with me calling you as the next mayor. And they said, no, I'm not running for mayor. I said, no, you are not running right now, but in the future. So there, that is where the foundations of that district lays. So first of all, why are there only forty thousand registered voters?
There's a lot of voter apathy within just America general. But I think, you know, when you look, forty thousand out of a hundred thousand registered occupants within that city, a hundred thousand citizens, forty thousand voters, you know, could be because, you know, for whatever reason, people don't think voting really makes a difference. But I'm happy about the forty thousand that do because voting is absolutely important. There's been a move now with Up the Vote 901 through Pastor Eric Fisher. He has been working to up the vote within Shelby County, Tennessee. And so I'm excited about that. We have to engage our young men and women a little bit more to let them really understand what voting is about and how important it is.
It is, yeah.
And how it plays a part in the redistricting. You know, if you start losing votes, you start losing population, things don't go as well for you when it comes to redistricting within your, the boundaries. Whatever office wins, whatever group wins, they dictate how the boundaries will be drawn. And so it's really important to vote. You know, your voice, voting is something that says, hey, I agree with this, I want this. And you get to exercise that vote on who you will put in office to represent you, to serve you. And so it's really important. But I think we have to do a better job of educating the public as to the value of voting and what, why is it so important? And why did our founders, our forefathers and the other people before us, fight so hard for the vote to have a voice and who would be leading us within our city?
Very good. So man, you very well explained why voting is important. Now, how many votes would it take for you to win out of those forty thousand?
Fifty-one percent.
Fifty-one percent, we're talking about?
Let's go fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three percent. I need to be just way on over the other side.
So ladies and gentlemen, you heard him. We would like you to have a big victory, right?
Yes.
Alright, okay. So now, let us go to the basics. Why are you running for office?
I'm running for office because I think this is a pivotal time for Shelby County, Memphis. It's, it's, and I tell people everywhere I go that this election is more important than the presidential election for us because it's the changing of the guard. We are about to select a new mayor. We're about to select new council members. And the mayor will be selecting new people, division heads, directors. And one of our big problems in our city right now, we cannot ignore, and it's crime. Violent crime, property crimes are up. And we have to figure out what director, the mayor, choosing a mayor, but choosing which, what director that mayor will choose to take the role of moving us forward. As a Colonel on the Police Department, I worked to reduce crime, alright? That was my sole goal. And how I did it was community policing. I worked hard in making sure I governed our community. I think when I first met you, I was a lieutenant and we were working in the community, community policing over there at the old Bell South Building in Midtown.
Midtown Co-op.
Midtown Co-op.
Which is now a very good apartment complex. You do not see that building.
No, it don't even look like it was ever there.
Exactly, yeah.
But we worked to reduce crime, alright? But it was not just police alone, it was policing community. Because community now has to develop and be at the table to strategize, to make a difference, alright, within our community. They have to have a voice and an input in this, in the safety plan, the safety strategies that go in place alongside with police. So I'm running to make sure, because as the City Council, I know the value, coming from a Colonel, coming from a citizen, growing up in this city, I know the value and importance of everybody taking part on community safety. I'm running to make sure that the next director, because on the council, you get to approve the director, alright? So you can demand, you can ask on behalf of our citizens, on behalf of District Three, that that new director, whomever it will be, will be one who will truly focus on building relationships and collaborations with community stakeholders to create a strategic safety plan that all of us can move out on to address the issues that we're dealing with. That's crucial. Another big issue is poverty. You know, so often times we just constantly hear about the, what, over forty percent of our children are born, in this city are born into poverty. That's not good. But we can do something about it. And so we have a chance now with this blue oval boom coming. Industry, jobs, opportunities are coming that we can work with workforce development. We can get with our churches, we can get with our CDCs, we can get with our businesses. And we can create pathways, alright? Until these workforce positions where as we can increase our middle class. If we can increase our middle class, we absolutely are increasing the economic base of our communities. And those communities won't be suffering and won't need. And I love the fact that people give, alright? I love that Memphis is a philanthropic mindset city. But at the end of the day, you want to raise people up. You don't want people to just, excuse me, I'm sorry. You don't want people.
Yeah, so on, on one hand, they call it the philanthropic capital of the U.S. Because there is a whole lot of giving and.
Yes.
And whenever I heard that, I do not believe it. It is true, but it is hard to believe. But the flip side is also true that unfortunately, Memphis is on the list, on the top of all the bad lists
Yes.
of poverty, crime, and so many other bad things. And one more bad thing it is on the top of is that Memphis is called the hunger capital of the U.S.
Yes.
And.
Lot of food, yes.
Lot of food desserts. And, and the problem is that there are, food is there, we have food, but it is not distributed evenly. And I'm also the founder of the Memphis Area Coalition on Hunger that caters to fill in the gaps between where there is enough food and where there isn't. Now, when we talk about the same issue to the world, with the world, there's the same thing, that in Africa, there are people dying of hunger. And in other places, there's a whole lot of food that is being wasted. And the idea is to have that food reach to the people who are already. But for us, our world is Memphis, Tennessee. So it is necessary that we fill in those gaps, not only in terms of food, but also in terms of crime, poverty. What do you think can be done regarding the crime? You being a commander of the New Orleans Station as when you retired. And by the way, I do want to say that the thing you mentioned about the Midtown Co-op, that was about twenty years ago.
Yes.
So I have seen you work with the community and for the community. And your job did not necessarily entail joining diverse people, people from various communities, but you were part of that. And, and so definitely thank you, although it has been two decades. But what I want to say is that I have seen you being out in the community and working not just as a Memphis police officer, but as a person who really does care about the community. So definitely thank you for that. But crime is at the helm right now. Break-ins and car break-ins are rampant. What, what, what do you think can be done about it?
We have to, you know, Sandeep, I went to, I took a group of pastors out to the jail to talk to the young men who had been bound over as adults, sixteen-year-old guys who had been bound over as adults. And I took them out there because I wanted them to see that these guys had got in trouble, these young men had gotten in trouble. But there was a reason why they got in trouble, alright? There was a reason why, and we needed to know if we were going to be able to help them. We needed to go to them and find out where did we miss it, alright? What happened, what happened along the way? And so going there, all the pastors, you know, the ministers, leaders, they was absolutely shocked, alright? When they asked the young man, said, hey, what could we have done? What can we do to make sure that other young men don't come here? Or make sure, or how can we help you? A young man said, you all need to get in the way. You all need to come out and be amongst these young men and women. In our communities, there is no solid me, alright? There is no, we don't see all of you, alright? You know, you come in here now while I'm in jail, but had you been out there talking to me, guiding me, helping me, I probably wouldn't have went here, alright? But I didn't have no one else to, nobody to tell me anything other, anything other than what I was doing. So I think it's real crucial that we remember that is important. If we value our young people, if we really believe that our young people are our future, they are our most valued asset, then we have to be focused on making sure that we go to where they are and give them the help and the resources they need to move into the right path and to be all that they can be. That's crucial. I went to the jail just the other day and the young men, you know, talking to young men, and here's what they said, can I come and talk to you when I get out? Can I come and see you when I get out? And I'm like, yes, you can come, come and see me, because that's what they need. And we have to realize, Sandeep, I grew up in the sixties. And in the sixties, our community was a community. It was a community where everybody looked out for us. It was a community where I saw businessmen, teachers, educators. I saw everybody in my neighborhood. I didn't want to move to another neighborhood because our neighborhood had everything within it. Black business, I mean, it had everything. It was just a beautiful place to live. Well, we have to understand that today, so, so many communities, young men don't get to see what I saw growing up, alright? I had a church that was a surrogate family, alright, my extended family. So I had so many people helping me. I thought it was strange that the young men asked to come see me, alright? Because I wouldn't have asked to come see anybody when I was their age because I had people already in my life. I didn't need anybody, I didn't need to go see anybody. We have to make sure that these young men and women have somebody to go see. You know, we have to go into those places. We have to partner with organizations, we have to partner with our churches, we have to partner with some churches out in the suburb, megachurches, churches, have to partner MARS, whatever, have to partner with the areas where hate crime, where poverty, where homes, fatherless children are in place. And we have to go there and be there for them. We have to engage within our schools to make sure that our young people see a clear path to victory, a clear path to dream, you know, and hope for a future. That's what we have to do. And that's how we end this cycle that's been going on where it's young men, now younger young men, fourteen, thirteen, twelve, are getting caught up in the criminal system. You know, that's how we stop it.
In twenty eleven, I was part of a summer youth conference on unity and hope. It was a conference, but that was something to be followed through with people in the community going out, being a grassroots and helping the children and the youth and letting them know that you do not have to look forward to the street goon
Yeah.
as your hero, because there is nobody else. And they probably do not have a father to look up to or a man who they can follow and follow through. So they actually, to be initiated, they have to do some crime to be part of, of that group. Because there is nothing else that they can look up to. So the idea is to provide them with somebody and say, hey, this is a doctor, this is an engineer, you can be a doctor. You don't necessarily have to be doing drugs. You don't have to be going to jail many times to be called a hero in your community.
Yes.
And unfortunately, that is what has been happening. However, what you just mentioned has been talked about many times. And still, those things have not been implemented.
Not been implemented as they should, alright? That's why I'm running for council. Because I work with some organizations that are doing this here. Young Man University, Dr. Jeffrey Fittrell works with young men constantly, help young men to get high school diplomas, young men who have, who have dropped out, failing, get connected with Dr. Fittrell with Young Man University. And man, they move forward. It's, it's an awesome organization. Then we have John Payne with the Persuaders, awesome organization. Bring young men together during the summer and just work with them and just introduce them to podcasting, introduce them to medicine, introduce them to plumbing and, and carpentry. He showing them different paths they could go to be successful. There's an awesome camp each year that he puts on. And then he meets like quarterly with those young men to keep following them through. You have organizations out there at Fraser Rowley, Pastor Floyd, the Husband Institute. You know, when I first, he invited me to the Husband Institute. I thought I was going to talk to husband. I get there and I'm talking to these little boys, you know, young boys, you know, elementary school, high school. And I'm like, wait a minute. And he's like, man, these are the husbands, these are the husbands of the future. And so there's organizations that are out there doing this work.
So you're talking about Ricky Floyd?
Ricky Floyd, Pastor Ricky Floyd. There's organizations out here doing their work. And I just named three that I know that are absolutely on steroids with it. You also have organizations that are on the ground to move young men out of the way, off the path of going to jail, off the criminal path. You have organizations like Memphis Allies through New Villages. They are out with street interventionists who were once gang members, who once went to prison, but out on the streets to give back. You have Darrell Cowans, he on nine oh one down in the Whitehaven area, the district I'm running in, he's out there. But he's on the ground, working, hiring people, going into our schools to target young men who would be getting in trouble, giving them a place, giving them a new path, a new direction to make things happen. So there's a lot of organizations that are on the ground doing a lot of work and they don't get the media attention that they should. Five o'clock news, you know, they have this saying, if it, you know, if it bleeds, it leads. And so the negative is always told about our city. But the greatness, the good things about our city sometimes get hidden behind the pages of the negativity. And those organizations are doing nine oh one block, Darrell Lane. He been doing this, Darrell Lane has been doing this work for a lot of years out there pulling young men out of that path, giving them a new direction to go forward in.
So you know, and I have experienced this as well, that when the news channel come, they interview you for like fifteen, twenty minutes.
Yes.
And when it is aired, it is for a few seconds.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So we are one show that takes the message directly from the horse's mouth without editing. So this is not going to be edited at all.
Good.
It will go in its entirety and reach out to the public. You mentioned four, five names. And our intentions are to foster positivity. So I would like you to reach out to these four and introduce me so that we can highlight what they do in the community and catapult that message onto many, many others. Now, having said that, and the good thing that is being done in the city, we have six hundred and fifty residents in the city of Memphis, around somewhere close to that. And over one point two five, close to one point five million in the county. The, the problem that I see is that being associated with the U.S. Department of Energy and U.S. Department of Commerce in this case, and being associated with the, the National Council for International Visitors. The U.S. Embassies in different parts of the world bring people from those countries into the U.S. And these people, based on their, their careers or the businesses, are taken to different businesses or things associated with their own careers within the cities in the U.S. And they are about six to eight cities. Sometimes they end up coming here. I'm giving this premise because when they come to Memphis, I'm one of those people who volunteer to take them to different areas, including the then Commercial Appeal, and the Memphis Chamber, the city mayor, the county mayor, and different departments depending on their backgrounds. When I take them to these departments, it is so refreshing to know what the, I mean, not refreshing to know the history, but it is good to know the history of Memphis, but refreshing to know what entails, what comes in the future for Memphis. But what is happening does not necessarily trickle down to, to the people in Memphis. We still have poverty, we still have crime, we still have many, many issues. The gaps persist. So with all of these good people and good initiatives being done through so many nonprofits and churches, why are there so many break-ins? Why are there so many murders happening?
You know, when, 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 there's a thing I watched. I was poor growing up, but I didn't see myself as poor, alright? Because in all actuality, as a matter of fact, someone said we were poor and I said, no, we're not, you don't know what you're talking about. And I went home to my mom and I said, mom, they said we poor. My mom looked at us. She said, baby, when it come to money, we are poor. When it come to everything else, we are rich, alright? And so I learned as I grew that poverty has a lot to do with the heart of a man. If a man is hopeless and he feels there is no, he cannot move forward, there's no hope for him, there's no, I was poor, but I always knew I was gonna be something, alright? I was poor, I always knew I was gonna be a policeman. I was gonna, you know, I had so much good things around me. We have to own this, alright? We have to own within our city. If we're losing our young people, it's our fault. And that's the first thing we got to do. We got to own the problem as ours, alright? The reason why I've been able to help people is because when they bring me a problem, I consider the problem as mine, alright? And I have to help to solve the problem. In doing so, I take the pressure away from them and me also. We have left a lot of young men and women in poverty. And we have allowed poverty to really drain hope from the individual, alright? And so they feel hopeless, they don't see themselves growing old. I saw myself growing old. I saw myself being my granddaddy one day, alright? They didn't, they don't see it. We have to own the fact that we ain't loving people as we should. We're not mindful of those who don't have that pathway. And while so many of us are in positions where we could do a lot of work, we could do a lot of good, we could establish creative ways for young men to move, young men and women to move up the path, to make things better in their lives. But we haven't strategically gone to do just that. Because, you know, hey, I'm this guy who keeps it real. We have been kind of selfish, alright? And while we will give, you know, you can give, but what you really need, what I really need is you, alright? I really don't need the money, I need you, I need your presence. We have to put our presence in the lives of these young men and women so that they can hear from us, so that we can speak into their lives and speak life so things can be better. We have to strategically make sure that our school systems, everybody, you know, you know, Sandeep, Memphis is a competition with other cities, alright? Nashville, Chattanooga, but so often times, the people in the Memphis area, Germantown, Cal越, Bartlett, we tend to stay divided. We don't come together to make sure that we have a strong economic base, that we have a strong employee base where people can come to our city, the industries can come to our cities and find what they need to set up their companies so that they can thrive in this place. We have to be focused on that. We have to focus on making sure that our school system is the best, alright? That it is graduating students who are ready to go into the career trades or college, you know, medicine, science, media, technology, whatever it is. That's what we supposed to do as leaders. That's why I'm running for City Council. Because this is a pivotal time where we have to begin to focus on future. And we have to figure out, how do we go and grab the loss? Those young men who don't see, alright? And bring vision to them so that they can make this happen in their lives also. That's the work that we have to do. But if we don't do that, if we leave them alone, if we keep seeing them in the negative, if we don't see those young men and women as individuals who want something, alright? If you hear a boy say, I want to be a rapper, that's all he knows, some, some of them, that's all they know. But they know that's the way that I can be somebody. I want to play basketball, you know, that's all he knows. He don't know all the other paths that he could, he don't know he could be a, he could be a millionaire being a plumber, alright? He hadn't seen that. But we have to show him that, alright? But what that boy just told you was that he did have hope to be somebody someday. That's what he. to be something someday. That's what he wanted to do.
So we have to put ourselves based on that hope and give him many directions to go.
Give it, yes. And tell him about our hopes and how God just took us and guided us through. Tell him about our mistakes, but how we kept on going, alright? How we made good decisions to keep on going. Show him the value of making one good decision. Uh one good decision can open you up to an opportunity to choose three or four more good decisions, alright? And you make the right decision, now you got eight or ten that you can choose from. It gives you doors to enter in so that you can have a wonderful life. Uh a life that God really wants you to have, which is a good life. You can make it good for you and your children. That's on us as a community to make sure that all of our kids have that opportunity. Uh you know, and so, you know, that's crucial. But if we don't do that, then we can't sit back and say, uh you know, they don't want nothing. No, we didn't want anything. See, we have to own it. You didn't want nothing, because if you wanted them to be better, you'd have went over there and put the things in place. And so I've been working to put those things in place, uh even as a colonel. I was working to make sure young men didn't go on that pathway. As a council member, I'm gonna work with those community agencies that uh have to find funding for those communities, uh those agencies, those organizations that we just named, that's on the ground doing this work so that we can have to have, so that we can create a successful path for our young men, young men and women to get on. You know, and stay on, uh and thrive so that they can be successful.
Okay, so um ladies and gentlemen, as you saw, he didn't miss a beat. Uh and I know I can hear him, but I'm sure you can also see and hear him being a politician already, and he has not won an office yet, but he is going to, right? You're going to win.
Yes, sir.
Um and one of the the things of our show, One Universe, is that we do not put any politicians, even when they have one, we do not put them on the hot seat. We do not ask them, aha, gotcha, questions. We always promote good things, even for an elected officials. And that is what we are looking forward to from you, my friend.
Hey, listen, I'm looking forward to serving uh our community to to continue serving our community. Uh I don't see myself as a politician, I see myself as a servant. Uh someone asked me the other day, uh they were saying, Kirk, would you wear a lot of hats? You know, you executive director, uh Colonel of Police Department, you are pastor. Uh you serve on club, you you know, you you just do all these things. And I told him, I said, no, I really just wear one hat. And that's your servant, alright? I've I learned to be a servant leader when I was growing up. I continue to do that. Uh that's me, alright? I'm just here to serve.
So there is a whole lot of uh of importance to servant leadership.
Yes.
And uh we are looking forward to you following through as you take the seat um and on the council, city council, so wish you all the best.
I wish you the best also. Thank you so much for allowing me.
So ladies and gentlemen, um as you saw that, we are touching on some problems, some issues and community, major issues uh that we are dealing with. But the reason for touching on those issues is to talk about the problems, the solutions to the problems and how to implement them, because as I always say, you can have a multi-billion dollar solution, and that would be worthless if that solution is not implemented. So we are looking forward to the solutions being implemented and Memphis city growing in leaps and bounds and becoming a better place. So thank you so much, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Until next time, have a wonderful time, and when you tune into our show, know that we will have one more topic, one more phenomenal person, or discussions about something good that will help you, and you can look forward to the future being a better place to live in. Thank you so much.